Good evening. I'd like to welcome you and call to order the September 18th meeting of the Milton School Committee. Please rise and join me in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to offer a moment of silence. Please join me in a moment of silence. Milton lost one of our dear community members this week, this past week, Evan Jones at the age of nineteen, a graduate of Milton High School and a beloved son of our own school committee member Kristen Bagley Jones. Please also join me in a moment of silence for the men and women who lost their lives in Washington DC this past week. As we begin the meeting, I'd like to start with a very special welcome to some brand-new members around the table. Every year, the high school runs an election for many officers throughout the school, but three very special people to us are the school committee representatives, and I'm just gonna read to you a little bit about them. So Evy is sitting in the middle, right? Evy Oliverio, she's a senior class representative as well as a president of the Milton High School Drama Club and the mascot of the Milton High School Latin Club. Evy is also an active member on the debate team, the outdoors club, Best Buddies and National Honor Society. Matt McCarthy on the end is a junior class representative. As an athlete on the football and football team and rugby teams at Milton High School, Matt is also the treasurer of the Latin Club, one of the school's student leaders, and also a member of the Best Buddies Organization. And last but not least, we have Audrey Erickson. Audrey is our sophomore representative and is very excited to be part of the student government this year. Audrey will be part of this year's musical and is also involved in the drama club, outdoors club, Gay-Straight Alliance, and the swim team. Once the elections have been finalized, the freshman class representative will join this group, but we would really like to welcome you all and thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedules. We can tell you have busy schedules, and we look forward to hearing your voice around the table. Can we give them a round of applause? Thanks. At this time, we need to approve tonight's agenda. I have two small changes under the superintendent's report. As you can see, Mr. Phelan is standing in or sitting in for Ms. Gormly this evening. Welcome, Mr. Phelan, and thank you for taking this on. And under the enrollment presentation, he will also be giving a brief update on residency. And under the school committee, under the chairman's report, we are going to remove the school committee goals for this time, and that's it. Does anyone else have any further changes? Or additions? Thank you. Is there anyone here for Citizen Speak? Nope. Okay, thank you. We have some minutes to approve. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting on May 15th, 2013.
Anyone?
So moved. Moved by Mrs. Padera. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Walker. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor of accepting the minutes? Opposed? Abstained? So we have 3-0-2 with Mrs. Kelly and Mr. Walker abstaining. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the May 20th, May 30th, school committee meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Walker, seconded by Mrs. Padera. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? That's 3-0-2. I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting, the minutes of the June 5th, 2013, school committee meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Walker, seconded by Mrs. Padera. Any further discussion or corrections? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? 3-0-2. And finally, the June 12th, 2013, school committee meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Walker, seconded by Mrs. Padera. Any further questions or edits?
I do have just a couple of suggestions. Under the chairman's report, which is the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th page, about the fourth line down, says, "Less than two months ago, he said," this was my statement, "both of us," referring to Ms. Padera and I, "received financial contributions from Mr. Pavlicek." I just want to make clear that it was our election campaigns that received those contributions and not us personally. And I think, I'm pretty sure that's what I said.
That is correct.
So if we could just change "us" to "election campaigns," I think that's a little more clear. And then also, three lines from the bottom of the same paragraph, four words in, it refers to us or to us, "we will not participate in the discussion." This was talking about potential taint, and I think I was referring to the committee, and the "us" referred to the committee and not to just Ms. Padera and myself. So just with those suggestions.
Thank you for those clarifications. Anything further? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? That's 3-0-2. Thank you. And we'll move into the superintendent's report. Mr. Phelan.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We're very fortunate to be able to introduce you to some of the administrators that we hired for the 2013-14 school year. We have a lineup of elementary, middle, and high school administrators that we would like to introduce to you tonight. So first, we'd like to have the high school administrators come up. Brian McInerney, Larry Rooney, Karen Cahill, and Ed Melvey, and have them come up and have a seat. And we'll read their bios and show the community who they are and what brings them to Milton. Brian, could you grab one more chair for me, please? First, we'd like to introduce Brian McInerney. Brian is in the position of assistant principal at Milton High School. Brian graduated from the University of Amherst, and he has received a post-bachelor in special education from Bridgewater State College. Prior to his administration experience, he was a teacher at the high school in the alternative program. I would very much like to welcome Brian McInerney to the administrative team here with James Jett and Michelle Cruiser. Larry Rooney is our athletic director. Larry got his bachelor's from Providence College, and he is involved in his master's degree at Northeastern University in sports leadership. Prior to coming to Milton Public Schools, Larry worked as a health and wellness director and teacher at the Thayer Academy in Braintree. So welcome, Larry. Thank you for being here. Karen Cahill, who has been here the longest of all four of our administrators in front of you, is a graduate of Boston College. She has received a master's degree in counseling from the University of Massachusetts, Boston, a master's degree also in administration from Framingham State College. She has been a guidance counselor and a math teacher in the Milton Public School for a good amount of years, and I'll say that. I would like to also welcome Ed Melvey. Ed is joining us as the science department head at Milton High, part-time. Ed is a graduate of Boston State College and has a master's degree in education from University of Massachusetts, Boston. Before retiring, Ed was the principal of Canton High School and also the director of science and STEM in technology, biology, chemistry, and physics throughout the district in Canton. So we very much welcome this great, these four great additions to the Milton High School administrative team. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Do you have any, Karen, would you like to share, yes, the start of your school year with the committee?
It's been a great-
Can you just pull that microphone out, please? I'm just- Careful it up. Thanks. As far as the guidance department, it's been a great start to the school year. We have a new administrative assistant, Karen O'Connell, as well, who's been a great addition to the staff. We're all very excited to get the year going. We're asking all parents at the high school to make sure they have active Naviance accounts. We'll be communicating a lot through those accounts to let people know about upcoming college visits and anything else that goes on through the guidance department.
Thank you, Karen. Larry?
This is an exciting time of year for Milton High School athletics. We have over 400 student athletes on 20-plus teams competing out on the fields, and we've started the season strong with all of our teams, and in particular, this Friday night, we have our first home football game versus Stoughton High School. We hope we get great fan support from the school committee, the high school, the middle school, and all the elementary schools, and we really look forward to being out there Friday night and throughout this fall season.
Thank you, Larry.
I have thoroughly enjoyed my first few weeks as a vice principal. I hope to continue that. I am meeting more and more students and making more connections with staff and others in the community, and I just hope to continue, and I hope everyone is as happy as I am.
And I'm also very happy to be here, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity to add to the team at Milton High School. You might be interested maybe in the thoughts of a newcomer to Milton High School, but someone who has some passing acquaintance with high schools. My first, and I would say lasting, impression of Milton High School is that it is quite a remarkable place. My first impression came from sitting in front of the superintendent's office in a gym, I'd like that one. And as people walked by me, I'm talking students and staff, I don't think there was one person who did not greet me with a smile, which I thought was quite remarkable. So now I've been there for a while, and I've had a chance to see things up close and personal, and I'm still impressed. I've found that the principal is, I would say, devoted to making sure that his staff and his students get the support that they need. And I have to say that I love watching the two assistant principals as they interact with the students. It's quite obvious that they like their job, and what's more important than that, they like kids. And I really wish that I had them in my building when I was principal. So what I would like to say is that I'm very happy to be here, and I think that all of you should be very proud of Milton High School.
Thank you. I'd like to say that these four individuals, when hired at different times in the summer, have dedicated incredible amounts of time and energy well beyond their time allocated by contract or by work hour of the day to ensure that their respective programs and positions were represented well. Karen Cahill was in all summer. Larry Rooney's been working day and night. Brian McInerney's, Karen Never Leaves, and Ed has just started with us, and he's been a remarkable asset to the high school. So we thank you so much for being here, and also to add to Athletic Director Rooney, the first football game, but also the field is open up from its renovations, the Copeland Foundation's donation with some capital money. They painted the par on it last weekend, so we're very excited to have that open up for all of our athletes this week. So thank you very much. I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Just a minute. Any comments?
Just one more thing.
Mr. Walker?
First, welcome to all of you, and we're very proud of the team we have here, and I'm sure that all of you will help to make it stronger. Larry, no pressure, but we're expecting the football team will continue to build on the strong finish that it showed last year.
Well, I went down last Thursday night to watch them play against Mansfield, who's number nine in the state and has a very strong, deep team, and I was very impressed with Coach Bowe's team and the effort and the energy they brought to the field that night. The score could have been significantly worse, but those kids fought hard, and I anticipate they're gonna bring that same effort this Friday night and throughout the season.
Looking forward to it.
Anyone else? Mrs. Padera?
I'd just like to say, too, I know that there's, and I'm sure Mr. Phelan's gonna mention it later, but there's a cookout. The boosters are having a cookout at 5:00 before the football game, so I know some of the younger families that might not be able to necessarily stay for the whole game, might come for the cookout and then stay for a little bit of the game at least. It's a, it is a great opportunity to see the football game and under the lights on Friday night and, and see the new field. So I will be there with my kids, so.
Thank you to you all. We look forward to hearing more from you throughout the year and begin this great partnership. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Very much. Thank you. Thank you. Very much. I would now like to welcome, from the Pierce Middle School, Ms. Christine Chiapetta and Welcome.
Thank you.
We welcome Christine to the position of science coordinator, part-time, at the middle school. Christine is a graduate of the College of the Holy Cross. I almost said BC, and that would be very insulting to the College of the Holy Cross. We do have a couple of BC grads here today. With a master's in education and teaching and curriculum from Harvard University, and Christine was previously employed by the Cambridge Public Schools and has done some work in Rhode Island as well. Russ Wilson comes to us with a degree from Fordham University and a master's of science and administrative leadership from Boston College and a master's in art of teaching from Emmanuel College. Russ also comes to us from the Archdiocese of Boston, where he was a supervisor of several schools in the city of Boston for the Archdiocese, and Russ also works and teaches at Emmanuel College in the master's program. We welcome both Russ and Christine very much. Christine, would you like to share with us your first impressions of Pierce Middle School in your position?
Thank you. I'm really excited to be back working in middle school science. It's probably been more exciting for me than it has been for anyone else in the building this week. Pierce is, it's amazing. Cambridge was a great place to work, but I'm really impressed by the program there and the resources for kids. I spent the first week going through mountains of curriculum materials that were, we had a bunch donated from one of our sales reps, and then there was a whole wonderful pile of materials to distribute that had been purchased, I guess, through the advancement budget. So it's been exciting to bring things to teachers this week and be introducing myself and showing up with great new materials for their classrooms.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I believe I'm in competition with Brian as the happiest administrator in the town of Milton. I've really, I've thoroughly enjoyed the first few weeks of school. Working with Dr. Spalding and Ms. McReynolds and the administrative team has just been, they've been so welcoming and accommodating. I've been lost in the building, and they have come to find me, and I've just, I've really, really enjoyed the first few, few weeks. Some short-term goals for me, or one in particular, safety and security is paramount to everything that we do, and getting our students to school on time. We're looking to reduce tardiness over at the Pierce. I'll put a plug in, 7:57 is the final bell, but we're doing anything just to get the kids in, make sure that they are safe, they're in the homeroom. And I've just enjoyed being back with the students in my former role. I didn't have that interaction as often, and I was a little surprised to find out that my office was actually up on the hallway, which has been fantastic. I, I'm up and down the hallway at every transition and trying to learn the names, and I'm really enjoying myself, so thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Russ. Any questions?
Comments, school committee members? Well, I would really like to welcome you on behalf of the school committee and say that you're in very good hands with the leadership team that we have at Pierce, as we do at the other schools as well, but Pierce Middle School has found a niche and really made a name for itself. Years ago, kids left us from, you know, at middle school time, and now they're staying with us and in flocks and going on to the high school. So it's in part for the role that you will play, each one of you, at the Pierce, so we thank you and we welcome you. Great.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. We'd like to introduce our elementary administrators of Newton Milton Public Schools. If I could have Dr. Elaine McNeil-Germay, Dr. Sheila Kuskas, and Bernadette Moonen to join us, please. Welcome.
Thank you.
Dr. Elaine McNeil-Germay comes to us from Boston College in her undergrad. She has a master's in elementary education from the University of Massachusetts and a doctorate in educational leadership for social justice from Loyola Marymount University in California. She was previously employed in charter schools in Brooklyn, where she was a coach and an assistant principal. Side note is that Elaine also graduated, taught at the Colicott School some time ago and actually attended the Tucker School, and she now gets to be principal of that school, so congratulations. Dr. Sheila Kuskas graduated from Bridgewater State College. She has a master's in education in school administration from Bridgewater State College and a doctorate in educational leadership from the University of Massachusetts, Boston. Prior to her coming to Milton, she was a area superintendent for the Archdiocese of Boston and worked in schools from Lynn to Boston to Fall River. We are also joined by Bernadette Moonen. Bernadette is a graduate of Salvi Regina University and has a master's in elementary education from Bridgewater State University. She has been a teacher in the Milton Public Schools in the elementary level, in grade one and two in particular, for the last several years, and also worked in Rhode Island and in Quincy at St. Mary's School. So we welcome all three of these fine administrators to the Milton Public Schools, and like the other two groups, we have three people who spent an inordinate amount of time in the town during the months of July and August, preparing their buildings and preparing materials to get ready for our students this fall. So thank you very much for all your hard work. And Elaine, could you say a few words about your start?
Good evening. It's been a very smooth start to the year down in Tucker. We had our annual potluck last year. It was a, last year, last week, and it was a great success. We had a lot of families come out, and just in general, it's been very smooth. We have, as you know, an excellent staff, and everybody's really been on board to help make it a smooth transition. The students are excited. They love hearing that I'm an alumni, so that was a nice plug to start the year with. So it's been, it's been great, and it's been, you know, wonderful to be back in town and, you know, seeing old colleagues again as well.
Thank you, Elaine.
Sameet Glover. I'm hoping, Mrs. Padera, seems to have been a great start. The support has been phenomenal, not only from central office, which I thank all of you, but also from the parents, from the grandparents, and from the children. Every time one of those kindergartners looks at me and says, the first day, "Ooh, nice outfit," I realize I'm really happy to be back in a school. It's that interaction with them that I've really missed. Loved being an assistant superintendent, but like Russ, something was missing. So I thank you very much for the privilege and the honor of being in such a great district that really values their children as highly as you do, and it is evident in all you do. So thank you very much for this privilege.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm so excited to be working in Milton in this capacity. Like Mr. Phelan had said, I taught in Milton for the past few years, and I actually went through the Milton Public Schools as a student, so it's really great to be working with teachers and students in this capacity as the elementary science coordinator. I spent the past few weeks organizing materials and getting them into teachers' hands so they can start teaching hands-on science lessons, and we're doing our first professional development day for the first and second grade STEM this Friday. So I'm really looking forward to that and getting that rolling and getting into classrooms more and supporting the teachers this year. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the group?
Mr. Walker?
Well, again, welcome to all of you. I know that I'm preaching to the choir here, but you all know that the advancement agenda that we've set will be won or lost in the elementary schools. So all of you have critical roles to play in making sure that agenda is a success, and I would encourage Ms. Moonen and Dr. McNeil-Germay as often as possible to say to the students that actually you went through the Milton Public Schools, you graduated from the Tucker. How great for a student's self-esteem to know that someone who's in a leadership position in their own school and in their own system actually went to the same schools that they did. So I'd encourage you to say that as often as you possibly can, and welcome.
Mrs. Padera? I would just like to, yes, Dr. Kuskas, the year is going very excellent. You've already mastered the car line, which is one of the biggest challenges of the Glover School. I think everybody's very, very happy there, and I'd just like to say as well, I mean, Dr. Germay, probably, I'm sure got the feeling from all of us, but, you know, I felt probably one of the happiest times in the spring was hearing that you accepted the position at Tucker because we were all crossing our fingers and hoping that would happen. And Ms. Moonen handled herself pretty well at the MFE meeting the other night with some pretty heavy hitters, so I have great confidence in all of you. I think we have a dream team in the elementary school coming through to add to the team we already have, so good luck.
And I also would like to welcome you and say congratulations, and as a new school principal myself, I know how much time goes into it, and if you're like me, you got out early tonight just because you were coming here. So thank you for all that you do for not just our children, but for our families and our community to make it the great community that it is. So thank you very much for joining our team.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very much.
Yes. Let's just turn it on. Stand, and come back here.
Do we need the lights off or down?
I think that that's visible to the audience. So good evening, everyone. On the agenda tonight, we were requested to present to you, and you have a hard copy in your hand, a copy of the internal document that we use to keep track of the class size across the district at each elementary school, at each grade, and by program, as well as the grade levels at the middle school, six, seven, eight, and also at the high school. So this chart, which we use internally and is a live document, so at the top, it actually says, "As of September 18th, 2013," because it changes quite rapidly, actually, at this time of year with folks coming in new to the district and finding out that some families may have moved over the summer as we accept our new students into the district. So just to give people an understanding of how the chart works, we have in front of you each grade at the top of the line, and this is the Colicott School. So for example, these are the class sizes for all of our elementary Colicott School kindergarten classes. And then right next door, we have our two sections, our two program class sizes in French in the Innovation Pathway, 22 and 22 in the Innovation English Program, and 24 and 24 in French, and you can see that that's how these go along. This is the Innovation English Program up top. These are the French immersion program numbers and class sizes as we go up the grades from K through five. As you notice, there is a shared class at the Cunningham and the Colicott that are represented in this unique format with colors because this is an Excel spreadsheet. Both, all three of those classes have students from both Cunningham and Colicott, so this represents the amount of students in the light green from Cunningham that are in Ms. O'Larry's class, and that green number of 12 represents the Colicott students that are in that shared class. And the same system flows down for our blue and our purple who are in Ms. Kakamo and Ms. Young. So that number, again, represents over here the class size for those three classes that are shared in the Cunningham-Colicott. As we work down, you'll also notice it in yellow are the numbers of children that represent those in special education programs that would be sub-separate programs that we offer throughout each of our elementary schools, so that's why they're highlighted, so we use them for inclusionary purposes, so we know how many students could be at some time moving into the classroom for their services and inclusion parts of the day. And as we move down to the Glover School, again, the setup is the same with our Innovation Path- Pathway numbers up top and our French immersion numbers down below, going across by grade. And we, the yellow at the Glover represents the COTAT numbers that we have in our Glover School COTAT classes from grades K through five. Lastly, we have the Tucker School for the elementary group and the same philosophy. Just to give people some background, all of our principals and all of our school administrative assistants have access to this document. We keep it on a Google Docs shared folder. So when students come in and out, it's our way to calculate, move, and make sure that we're always abiding by the best class size possible in the district. So there is some work that happens, especially at the elementary level, to ensure that our class size is ideal at every level, at every school, as best we can when we're assigning students. As you move into the middle school, this is just the class size of the sixth grade, the class size of the seventh grade, and the class size of the eighth grade. And as you know, at Pierce, each grade is then further broken down by three teams of students in each grade. So we really have a school of 900, but it really feels like a school of 100 when you start to work into the team model at Pierce Middle School. And lastly, you have the high school numbers, freshman class, sophomore, junior, senior. And again, the yellow highlighted numbers represent students that are in sub-separate programs that we serve in the district as well. Lastly, so we can keep track and use this as a data retrieval tool, we also keep track of our subtotals in different categories of special education, English program, French program. And we also have students that do not attend school within the Milton Public School buildings, but are Milton Public School students who go out of district for services. And the numbers in that ODD line represent, in each grade, the amount of students that we currently are responsible for and live in Milton and support those students, but we do so in and out of district, special education placement. So that brings a total of students in the Milton Public Schools as of September 18th, 2013, at 4,004 students for the current 2013-14 school year. Are there any questions about the enrollment chart as presented?
Mrs. Padera?
So just a clarification, because I think I know what the answer is, just for people at home, though. Special education students are listed here, but that's not necessarily, the students that are on ed plans or, you know, certain educational needs aren't listed on here.
Correct. So thank you for pointing that out. The students that are highlighted in yellow, their IEP would put them in a program that's initially a sub-separate program or a program that, like the COTAT, where they are identified as a student or an IEP to be partnered in with a role model student to make up the COTAT class. There are students throughout each of those classes that are represented in the French and English program, for example, at the elementary level, who have, those classrooms have students with IEPs on them as well. They just don't warrant that level of services, so that's why we don't have them highlighted. So there certainly are more than the, maybe the 23 special education students that are highlighted at the Collicott because they would be integrated daily in their regular classes with less services.
Right. And they are in both programs?
Correct.
So one other question that's unrelated to that. So the, the English classes in shared at the Cunningham-Collicott, are those classes housed at both schools? And are they, are we, I think last year we started that to try to have more of a mix of those students? Is that was the original purpose of that?
Yeah, the combining of the classrooms came because there was only enough students for one English class that year. And we felt that we wanted to make sure that we didn't have a singleton class go through the Cunningham School. So we looked at the numbers at the Collicott, and it seemed like a good idea. And we met with the parents and Superintendent Gormly. We held a meeting at the Cunningham-Collicott to talk about the proposed idea. But we are joining those three groups of students. They rotate each year, so they're not always in the same, so if I was someone who had Ms. Young this year, I might not have the same group of students next to me when I went on to the next grade. So it was done to make sure that we didn't have a single strand. The communication that each of those teachers are responsible for is to work with Cunningham families and Collicott families in terms of open house and how they work with parents and PTOs, et cetera. It has gone very, very smoothly. Bernadette Moonen, ironically, who is here as our science elementary coordinator, was the first grade teacher last year, and it was a very successful year. So the classrooms, both of the Collicott classrooms are in the Collicott, and I can't say for sure exactly where the classroom is for the Cunningham class, whether it's actually in the boundary of Cunningham. There's actually a shared area, a hallway, that they, kind of move, the rooms move back and forth. So I'm not sure where the Cunningham class is this year.
Thanks, Mr. Phelan. Mr. Zulus?
John, just another clarification. It looks on the chart as if there's a, there are kindergarten classes in French at the Glover and Tucker. And that's probably just a column issue, right? If you look under Glover and Tucker.
Sure.
Turn the microphone to him, please.
Oh, sorry about that.
Sure.
John Hurt, anyway.
Yeah, I did.
No one else did, though.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, sure. In the, in the chart, it appears that there are kindergarten classes for the Glover and the Tucker that are in the French column. And I just wanted to find out if that's just a column issue, if there's a chart issue or what that was, just for clarification.
It is a column and chart issue. All kindergartens are taught in English. As you see right here, that this number just happens to be parallel as we have to use the rest of the, the rows as we go to the right for the other grades. These are all English kindergartens, as all of our kindergartens are. In this Glover is the COTAT.
Yep.
That's why it's separated, because we make sure that we identify those students in our chart for a lot of different reasons.
Mrs. Kelly?
So this is the first year with the new policy in place in terms of student assignment. I'm just wondering if you might report out on how that process went? And the goal of implementing that policy was to create balanced educational classrooms. And I wonder if you might speak to sort of, you know, what has happened with that process?
Sure. We instituted the cap this year. We had done lottery previous years when we instituted a cap. If you notice at the bottom of the column, if you want to look at percentages, the result of the cap is in the program, by program analysis, we have 52% of our students are in the French program and 48 are in the English program. So we consider that to be a pretty good balance compared to the year that we had, almost 66% at one point in time. In terms of how that process worked with people being able to access the program that they would have liked to have had, we were, we're very happy to say that everybody who did kindergarten in the Milton Public Schools last year, of all the families of the 300 or so students who entered first grade, 341, only 14 did not get the program that they wanted in their building. Over the summer, we asked the families to be patient, that we had a process that was done in phases. We had a phase up till April. We had a phase that ended in June, and then we had a phase that ended at the start of the school year. As we had other students move into the district, we were able to pull some of those families who were in that list of 14 and offered them the program of choice in their home school. And then everybody else on that list was offered the program of choice if they wanted to move. So in the end, I consider the cap a very successful new feature that allows us to organize the district in a more consistent way. It allows us to be more in charge of how the students are assigned. But it also never, ultimately, it did not, did not have anyone walk away without the program choice available to them, which I think was the big worry that people had as we worked through the process. So for that, for the, for the function of the lottery and the capping, I think that was a great success. In terms of the balancing of the class sizes, we have 26s in French, down to some 24s in French, so the class sizes are fairly consistent. Again, our, our cap that we have in first grade French is 26, and that balances out with our first grade class averages of about 22 to 21 students if we look at the average across the Innovation Pathway classes across the four schools. So we have healthy numbers in every grade. We have good class sizes at every level, and we were able to offer everybody the program that they would want it to be in, albeit a few folks in a different school. So that is how the program has moved forward, and I commend the work that was done by a lot of folks last year, the administration, the school committee, and a lot of families to make that process work, and I'm glad it worked out for the community.
Mr. Phelan, you began to talk about the grade level caps. Could you just articulate what they are at every grade level, please?
Well, we had a conversation about that. We use guidelines to make sure that we keep our class sizes at an appropriate level. But I believe by policy, to a conversation that we had earlier in the week with Member Kelly and Member Walker, that by policy, there is technically not a class size limit that the, the school committee has set policy by. The administration's guideline is not to go above 22 in kindergarten if we can't, if we can help it in 22 in first grade in English, and then 23, 25, 25. In our lottery and capping process, we did institute a cap of 26 for our French immersion program. So as this is a working document for us to use internally, we keep those class sizes at the top for the public to see at home. That whole, that guide, those numbers guide us to make sure that we keep our class sizes at appropriate levels at all times.
Thank you. Any further questions about this? Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Residence?
Mr. Pavlichek, if you could shrink that and bring up the PowerPoint. Related to enrollment and related to students being registered for school and the process, which gets very busy in July and August and in September, we have had many students come in new to the Milton Public Schools, as we do each year. And the registrar has worked extremely hard to ensure that families were received and went through the process to enroll their children and placed in a very timely manner. It's a little busy around the last week of August, but we had great success in getting all of our families in schools and balancing class size at the elementary level and into middle and high. But it also works as a reminder that the district works very hard at residency and ensuring that everybody who enrolls in the schools and also, over time, who attends the schools are residents of Milton. And so last year, I provided a short PowerPoint to outline how this process worked and with some data included, and I would like to do so because it is very timely in the school year as we work through this September and October, which is a busy time. So just as a means of introduction, that we have been very active as Milton Public Schools and a lot of other surrounding communities in making sure that we are only having students attend our schools that live in town. This problem has been proactively approached by Superintendent Gormley and the school committee with the hiring of a residency coordinator about a year and a half ago. And we do this work in relation to the law that is set by Massachusetts and also the policies of the Milton Public Schools. We do have positions in the Milton Public Schools that work towards ensuring that all students are residents of the town. We have a registrar who part of, we have, Jane Barrett is our registrar and data specialist, so part of her job is registrar, so I only say part-time because it's only part of her position. We have a residency coordinator who focuses solely on investigating and ensuring that all children and families who attend school in Milton live in Milton. And we also have always worked with two Milton police officers who receive stipends to investigate these cases on behalf of the town of Milton and the schools. So collectively, these three direct positions work about 76 hours a week on residency. This direct cost to the district and this work, if we just choose to include the residency coordinator and the two police officers, is roughly $62,000 a year that we allocate towards this work. This does not include, however, the work that our school secretaries and principals and the registrar and other folks do as part of identifying and investigating and ultimately meeting with parents and asking them to meet and discuss their residency in attending the school. So it is, as you'll see with some of the data, there's a lot of work that goes into not only identifying students if they do or do not attend school, but also just keeping track of families who move within the district and ensuring that we have the correct information about each family in the database in terms of emergency phone numbers and accurate information that's important for a lot of different purposes, so our database is up to date. So we look forward to showing you a little data. But before we do, a lot of folks say, well, if you're having problems with folks who don't go to school in town, living in town, why do you let them in to the school? So we have done a lot of work on the enrollment process, and we have tightened the packet up that we provide to parents to fill out. And we expect a lot. And the superintendent from a neighboring community called me the other day, who's new to her position, and said, well, you know, what does your packet look like, and how do you guys do that? And what does this mean? And how do you pull all that off? And I added, I emailed her all of our information and told her a little bit about what we did. So I truly believe that Milton is registering students and enrolling students and working with residency and enrollment in a very professional and thorough way, and people are actually asking us how to do it. So people have to bring in documents to satisfy the residency requirement, and if they can't, we call those unique registrations because there are situations where folks have a hard time producing certain documents, and it's very legitimate. So we handle those cases with a lot more specificity and some time face-to-face with families so we can support them through the process. And lastly, we do a lot of work with our landlords and our families in terms of the legal aspects of signing documents and making them aware that, you know, this is a process that we have, reserve the right to revisit and investigate at any time if we do have a concern. So the process that we have had in place over the last few years has been, I think, fine-tuned by our current residency coordinator, Doreen Walsh, and we're very, very happy with the work that is being done on behalf of the families in the town. So last year, from July 1 to July 1, from 2012 to 2013, was Mrs. Walsh's first full year. She came in partway through the previous school year, so we had a little inconclusive data, but we have a full year of data in front of you. And this data will not only talk about students that may have been excluded, but it also talks about the volume of work that happens behind the scenes to ensure that we have everybody completing a full packet if people move within town, if there's any other kind of issues that we can work out. All that work goes through the residency office, so there's a lot of other jobs that are attached to, or other tasks that are attached to her work, not just asking students if they live in town or not. So, but to get to the numbers, we, last year, over that fiscal year, we excluded 57 students who violated their residency policy. Thirty-five of those 57 were excluded with the support of police investigations, and 22 were excluded just through mailing documents and conversations with parents and guardians whereby we let them know that they needed to leave. 30 students who we excluded, not part of that 57, but a separate 30 were excluded, but then reinstated for various reasons. So I say that out loud because there's a lot of work that goes into that process, and we're very respectful with how we approach parents and children because the matter of fact is that there's a lot of variables that go into why it may look like a student may not live in town when they actually do or have a right to attend school. And I'll get into some of those laws and policies at the end of the PowerPoint. 79 students were investigated and resolved without exclusion. Forty-seven students had to complete missing documents from their registration that all had to go through the residency person. 217 students, which probably means a whole bunch of families, because there's a lot of big families in town, had to reestablish because either their mail came back wrong or they may have moved from one street in Milton to another. And every time that happens, we treat every case the same. They have to reestablish their residency. So when people say, well, why do I have to do this? Well, if your mail comes back and it's the wrong address, or if you write a check for after school and the check says a different address, or there are other reasons that may draw that to our attention, we have a tick list of things that we would ask you to reestablish residency for. So not all of them mean that you don't live in town, but we have to treat every single case the same. Lastly, 139 students received home visits as part of their unique registration process. So when a student or a family is a unique registration, we actually send our, one of our officers or the residency coordinator out to the house to verify that they're actually living in the home. And actually, that supports and facilitates a quicker enrollment process for our families who may not be able to produce the documents that needed at that point in time. So that's a lot of work done by that position of residency coordinator. I would say out loud that when we say that we are spending $62,000 in the aggregate for this work, we get a lot of bang for the buck in relation to all the different safeguards that are put in place and all the different functions that happen regarding keeping the database up to date, all students. database up to date, all students enrolled properly. And if, in fact, we find folks that don't live in town, they are respectfully met with and worked through that process. Just to give a snapshot of what has happened thus far from July 1, 13 to currently, we have already excluded eight students. We have 11 students who are being worked with right now through the police and our team. We have 18 students who will be observed and investigated. So, there's a lot of work happening as we speak. The summer time in August and September is a busy time for our residency team in the Milton Public Schools. The residency team, in particular, our support of the Milton Police, they do the home visits, they meet with parents, they welcome people, they are able to go in to homes and confirm their living arrangements. And it really helps to have a relationship with the Milton Police. I think the parents appreciate it. And so, they do a lot of work, other than just investigative work as well. They help us with these registration processes each year in our home visits. So, that's the data involved. I always like to say that there are complications and kind of unique aspects to determining residency for families to know that there is the McKinney-Vento Act, which is the homeless legislation from the federal government that allows students and families to have access to schools if they become homeless in the district for which they have lived prior to becoming homeless. There's a whole lot of detail behind that that goes into what may look like a residency case, but it's really not. And again, this speaks to why we are very, very respectful as to how we approach every family and every student that we work with in regards to residency. The law that is written regarding the ability to attend a school and living in a town is a very vague law, so there's a lot of interpretation. We work with our legal department to ensure that we're doing all of our cases by the law. And our policy does reflect that the law, and it was updated by this school committee just this past March, 2013. And, you know, there is a rise in parents who are having their children move back. And there's an increased amount of folks that we have living with other folks. And those are our alternative registrations when someone may come back to live with their mother and father, with their own children and family, and they have a unique or alternative living arrangement that doesn't fit how we enroll students. So, we have adapted that unique residency aspect to our enrollment process, which I think the parents appreciate. But we also make sure that that is one that can verify their residence in the town and their ability to attend school. So, it's a lot more complicated behind the scenes than I think some folks would want to, would understand if they didn't know these laws. And I ask and appreciate the trust and the patience of all of the parents that we work with when we ask them for extra documents or we ask them to re-enroll or reestablish residency when they can say, well, Mr. Phelan, you know, I moved in across the street from you. Why do I have to fill that folder up? Or I see you at the soccer game, or you know you drive by my house and you went to Tedeschi's when you go to Tedeschi's. So, I say that every folder has to look the same. Every child and family should be treated the exact same. And if we do that process respectfully, then we can ensure that we're treating our families well, but also ensuring the public's trust that all of our children live here and go to school here. So, what do I do if I think that there's a residency case that I would like to let somebody, make someone aware of at the school? You can call 617-696-4470 and dial 5516, the extension. Or you can email residency@miltonps.org, and that will go directly to our residency coordinator. And she will take your concern very seriously and put it on the list of folks to be investigated or discussed or brought to the attention of the principal. So, again, we ask for patience and we appreciate the support that the school committee has given this work. We think it's important work. And we are glad to be able to say to the town that we are addressing this issue in a respectful but very proactive manner.
Mr. Phelan, where can this, can this number be found and this information be found on the homepage of the MiltonPS.org website?
It's on MiltonPS.org, and I will ensure that that's there on the front tomorrow. And this presentation will be up tomorrow as well.
Right. Thank you. Any further comments for Mr. Phelan? Mrs. Kelly?
Well, first of all, I want to commend Mr. Phelan for all the work that he's put into this because basically, he has driven this since it was brought up, I don't know how many years ago now, at a, I think, at a town meeting where people were saying that they thought that there might be people in the school system that, you know, didn't really live in Milton. And that was something that they were concerned about. And I think the present administration took it to heart. I think John has been, you know, working with legal, working with the state. You know, his point about the law being very vague is so true. And therefore, Milton, in many respects, is sort of building the template for other districts to follow, as he mentioned, other districts call and ask advice. So, I want to commend you because personally, you really have taken this on and driven it. We're lucky now to have a residency coordinator who can take some of that workload off of your plate because at one time, it was only on your plate. And so, I appreciate that very much. With regard to when someone calls or emails about a particular family or whatever that they, you know, think perhaps maybe not following the rules, do they, do people who put in that information ever get feedback in terms of? I'm not sure whether, you know, I guess I'm just wondering if that's something that happens or that they should expect to hear something back.
I don't think that they should expect to hear anything back because it becomes a very, very personal situation with the school and that family and that child. And so, we wouldn't be able to, for example, if I called up and said, geez, I see this family coming from Quincy every day as I get my coffee at the 7-Eleven East Milton Square, and they're coming right by. And I'm going to give you their name, Mr. Phelan, and here's the plate of the car because I go to Pierce with my daughter. If I went and then, we have a form that we then fill out and we create a file, but that doesn't mean we investigate it right away. We have other information that we would look at first. Every call from would not warrant an investigation by police, so we don't do it that quickly. There's a process by which we would then eventually get to the police if needed. That family very well could be in a homeless situation or displaced, or it could be a divorced family that has a unique living arrangement. But we wouldn't be able to call back that community member and say, oh, by the way, this is that family situation. So, unfortunately, we wouldn't be able to give any results to the folks that call, but we do appreciate their feedback. And we do look into every single email and call and tip that we get.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Walker?
So, I would, first, I would second Ms. Kelly's commendation of Mr. Phelan. I know that for a number of years, John, you drove this single-handedly. And it is clear from the results that we are taking this seriously and we are getting the results that we're looking to get. And I think more recently, Ms. Walsh has, in some ways, matched the level of time and energy that you have placed in this issue. So, I think we've got someone who also understands the seriousness of what we're trying to accomplish. The question that we get asked from time to time and that you get asked from time to time is, do we feel like we have the right resources or enough resources devoted to this? With the full-time residency coordinator, do you feel like we've got this under control? Or do you think we still need to devote even more resources?
I think we have it under control. I think that the combination of doing a better job at the point of entry, which is when students register. And we do a lot of team approach to that. So, Doreen will help Jane Barrett, the registrar during this August time. And she'll also, we'll ask secretaries to team and help out at the kindergarten enrollment time where we want to make sure and vet every folder as best we can. So, that process, I think, has allowed us to limit the amount of cases that we ultimately investigate, combined with the fact that when Doreen works so hard at cleaning up the people who just need to reestablish who live in town, then the focus can purely be on the cases that may be truly ones that need to be excluded at some point in time. That work goes in waves, and we do provide support that swings between the residency office and the registrar and other folks. So, I do think that we're adequately staffed. And I would like to see the number go down a little bit, that of folks that we're excluding because I would like to think that we're actually doing a better job at the beginning point, at that entry point. So, I do think that we're staffed in an appropriate level. And I commend, you know, Jane Barrett and all the school secretaries who do a great job, who work as definitely a point of gathering all the information. The only person more important than the school secretary is the school head custodian, who knows everything in the building, so they know everything that's going on. So, we are appropriately staffed, and I think that we are very much addressing the issue efficiently.
Great. Thanks.
Mr. Zulus?
Thank you. John, do you have any estimate of the cost savings associated with that $62,000 in direct costs?
Depending on how you'd like to create the formula, if every student is about a $12,000 per year expenditure from the state's determination, if you can say out loud that we asked last year 57 students to leave the Milton Public Schools, if we multiplied 57 times that $12,500, that's a lot of money that's not being spent on someone who doesn't live in the town and is being spent on children that do live in the town. So, you know, it's hard to come up with a number. That's a hypothetical number. And then, if you didn't address it at all, you could multiply that number times how many years they would have stayed in the district. So, Mrs. Walsh did do that out. I think that it was over, you know, $2.5 million in one year or some very large number. But essentially, there is a cost savings because it means less books sometimes. It means a class size that's more appropriate. And so, we do feel like there is a cost savings. The $62,000 that we spend is well-spent.
Yeah. I mean, even the back of the napkin, if you had 27 students, if 30 went back, were reinstated, and you had 27 students at 12.5, that's about $325,000 right there.
Right. Yeah. And that 30 is not even of that 57. That 57 is a clean number, so that's how many actually were excluded last year. So, it's 57 times 12.5. So, that's a $600,000, $700,000 number.
Okay.
Mrs. Kelly?
I just want to caution us using 12.5 as the number because that assumes that for every person that you're asking to leave the system, that you're actually being able to take away a teacher, take away your classroom, et cetera. So, it is, there's definitely savings. I'm not sure what the number is. I think 12.5 is very high to be using as an estimate. But there's definitely a cost savings to be had.
I'd just like to finally say that I think that this residency update is proof that not only does this administration look out for the children that are within our buildings every day, but also for the taxpayers and the best interest of this community. And I think that's to be greatly commended.
Thank you. Thank you.
And once we get the lights on, Mr. Phelan?
Sure.
Do the happenings.
So, it's a pleasure to talk about the happenings in the Milton Public Schools between now and October 6th, our next meeting time. We have September 20th, this Friday night, the first home football game, as we spoke about earlier with Athletic Director Larry Rooney. There is a Boosters kickoff cookout from 5:00 to 7:00 over by Brooksfield, and the game will start at 7:00 o'clock. The annual cookout has been a great success. The Boosters put it on. Gary Kelly and his group at the Boosters do a fantastic job, and it's really, really a great night. Mr. Jett has sent out an email to high school, middle school, and elementary parents, inviting them and letting them know of the festivities. So, we appreciate it. The rumor has it that Member Padira will be cooking as well. September 23rd is the Milton High School Open House. We have already had the Cunningham Open House and the Pierce Open House this past week. September 24th is the Glover Open House at 6:30. September 25th is the Colicott Open House. And September 26th is the PTSFO Financial Night at Milton High School. I strongly suggest junior and senior parents attend that night. It's a very, very informative night as they begin that journey to graduation and college life. September 26th and 27th, we will host our Japanese exchange program at Milton High. Over 400 students will join our Milton High students here at Milton High School in the hallways and in the classrooms for a day. It's a great exchange. Steve Shapiro, our community member, has organized this work in exchange with us for the past six or seven years, and it's a great success. October 5th is our High School Cans for Cats program, right outside the front door from 9:00 to 12:00. That goes to the Boosters. And October 6th, here at the Milton High, 25 Guile Road, is our Celebrate Milton program that we host each year. And that is a very big day to come and meet community members. So, if you've lived here for 100 years or you just moved in, that is the place to meet people, see things, and greet your community.
And just to be clear, that's cans for Wildcats, not regular cats, right?
Cans for Wildcats. That's correct. We encourage all parents, and as a parent myself, I received a nice email from the high school saying, here's your daughter's schedule and here's your daughter's headline account number. Everybody has an headline account that is a Milton Public School student. Please make sure that you get that password so you can access all the assignments and the websites of each of your teachers, and they can communicate with you automatically because they'll have your email address. It's a very important feature that we want to make sure that our parents and teachers are taking full advantage of. And lastly, there was a Board of Health notice today that came out from the Milton Board of Health in a press release regarding West Nile virus. So, Superintendent Gormly did send out an email blast specifically to address this press release from the Board of Health. This went home to every single parent. It outlined the website that they could go to to get information in the press release from the Board of Health. It also mentions that Athletic Director Larry Rooney and Head Nurse Margaret Gibbons have taken precautions with our students and our student athletes. And we encourage all parents to read this material, go on the websites. They are not asking us to do anything different or special, but just to be aware and be proactive when you're on a dawn and dusk in regards to mosquitoes and wearing bug spray and long sleeves and long pants each day. So, please read that email. It's very important. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Just one other clarification. On the Celebrate Milton, it's Sunday here at the high school. Should it be perfect weather? And it's at Cunningham, Colicott, if it should be raining, correct?
That's correct. So, the rain date is October 6th, and it will be inside at Cunningham, Colicott. But we hope for nice weather because the high school site is the best site.
We'd lots of entertainment. It's a great, it's a great event. Thank you. We'll move on to the chairman's report. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chair Leroy Walker, who is going to discuss our summer visions to our school committee calendar.
Handouts are coming around. Two sheets, calendar, proposed data element for interview report. On the calendar document, if you turn to the last page, I'm proposing a few additions. And really, what I'm trying to accomplish here is to develop a structure for us where we do planning, assessment of end-of-year results, superintendent evaluation, discussion of district goals, and that we have a regular schedule for doing that. So, as you'll see, the first addition, and the changes are shown with red highlight, at the May 14th meeting, I'm proposing that we talk about and review the strategic plan. I'm hopeful that the RFPs are out. We've gotten approximately five expressions of interest. And we expect that the deadline for submission of proposals is, I believe, the 23rd. So, we do have some interest, and we will be kicking off that process, the interview process initially, and then selection process thereafter. So, I believe we will have a consultant to work with us on the strategic plan. And optimistically, I'm assuming that by May, we'll be able to discuss that finalized document. So, May 14th, initial review and discussion of the strategic plan. Two weeks later, May 28th, approval of the strategic plan that kind of sets for us the big picture, both in terms of a multi-year plan, but also priorities for the coming year, in addition to the work that we do in the retreat with the superintendent. Next, proposing that we actually build in a discussion of what I'm calling the superintendent's end-of-year report. An example of data elements that might be included are on the second sheet, but some of those are MCAS results by school, by grade, by teacher, demographics, gender, race, of those are MCAS results by school, by grade, by teacher, demographics, gender, race, IEP, free and reduced lunch by school, by grade, by classroom, percent of teachers in the administrative evaluation cycle, average SAT scores by race, gender, IEP, class size by school and by grade, number of lead teachers that we have, although I'm told that the contract, while the contract includes language for lead teachers, we don't have any currently. But if we did, I would propose that that would be an important criterion. Year-end budget report, list of the year's highlights and disappointments, list of the year's resource and program shortfalls, 2011 versus, or in this case, year-to-year look at staff by race and gender in all of the categories that we have, instructional staff by school, by grade, administrative support staff, custodial staff, and so on. So obviously, I'd encourage anyone to, to add to those data elements. But the idea is that each year, we would have a body of information to look at that might inform the planning that we do regarding the coming year, particularly with regard to the goals. June 25th, school committee retreat, which we already had on there, but just noting that we would expect both the superintendent and each of our school committee colleagues to be prepared to talk about what we see as important priorities and goals. July meeting, superintendent's evaluation, which we had on there, but just making clear that that is the superintendent's evaluation. And then finally, adding an August meeting where we would approve district goals. So that's obviously not cast in stone, but the idea is to try to come up with a structured sequence of how we do planning, evaluation, assessment of year-end results, and subsequently develop, development of new district goals for the coming year. So my motion is to include those items as part of the school committee's schedule, with the understanding that with regard to the proposed data elements, those can be amended by any of our school committee colleagues to add to that list.
Is there any discussion about this? Mrs., oh, sorry, Mrs. Padira?
Just a clarification. If we do want to add to those data elements, should we email you or Mr. Walker, you know, sometime before, obviously, that we do that meeting? Correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kelly?
I think this is a great idea. I think utilizing sort of the summer months, which in some respects are a little bit down from the normal school year, would be a good use of time for planning. And to coordinate between the administration and the school committee, I think that's sort of what we've been missing for several years now, and I think, you know, this kind of a calendar will get us there. I guess my question around, I see what you've listed here, but I'm not so sure that some, like MCAS data, I don't know that would be available. So internal data, or are we looking at the prior year? And, and that's, you know, a whole nother story. So I think this needs to be flushed out definitely more, and I think, but I think it's a great start. But creating a document that says, this is all the data points that we want to see on a yearly basis, I think will help the administration so that it's not, you know, one off here, one off there, et cetera, which I think sometimes happens. And it gives everybody sort of the benchmarks against which we'll be measuring ourselves. So I think this is a great idea.
So your data elements are proposed, but we're not voting on those tonight. We're just...
Well, I'm, I'm proposing that we approve these, with the understanding that we might add to them.
Personally, I'd like to just have a chance to think about those data points and reflect on them a little more before we vote on them. But certainly, the calendar itself, in terms of, you know, as Ms. Padira said, she might want to add to it. So I think that we should, we should approve the calendar proposal that you've made here. And knowing, I also just want to say, the summertime is a downtime for us, more or less, but not for the administration as they gear up for the new year and are in full hiring and all of that as well, so. But I think it's important, we've tried to have meetings during the summer, and working around people's vacation schedules and the like. But I think that this is really important work, and I think that the strategic plan is really going to help us set the stage for, for this work going forward. So I think it's perfectly aligned with what we've proposed to do through the strategic plan.
Okay, so I would move that we approve the schedule and agree to put the data elements on the agenda for next meeting for approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Did you get that? Sorry, move button. Okay. And I have some really great news to announce. I'm so excited.
I wonder what it is.
Last spring, when Mr. Pavlicek was stepping down from the school committee, he, I became aware of an annual award that the Mass Association of School Committees gives out every year. And they have several different awards that they give, but one is a Leadership Award, and it's for service to schools and communities through the Mass Association of School Committees. And so, we agreed as a school committee to nominate Mr. Pavlicek, and wrote, I wrote the application, and we received notification last week that Mr. Pavlicek did indeed win this award. I'm just going to read a little bit. It says, "On behalf of the Mass Association of School Committee Board of Directors, I am writing to let you know that you have been selected to receive the MASC Lifetime Achievement 2013 Award. This honor recognizes your contribution to the children of the Milton Public Schools, both through your years of service on the school committee, and through the many activities in which you have participated as an advocate for children." So we are really proud of you, Glenn, and all that you've done, and I know you're totally embarrassed, and I'm so sorry, but we are just really proud of you. So congratulations. I hope you're receiving this award at a very special dinner at their annual convention in November, so we're very proud of you.
You are clearly an evil letter writer.
What can I say? I'm a good writer. No, you are so well-deserving, and we're proud to be able to nominate you, and especially proud that you are a winner, so thank you. All righty, so we'll move on to our finance subcommittee report. Mrs. Kelly, please.
So, I know you find it hard to believe, but it's budget time again.
It's always budget time.
It's always budget time. And so, what we've been discussing is trying to put together a calendar that would bring the details forward to the finance subcommittee, and also to the full school committee, in a timely fashion such that we'll be able to deliberate and actually, you know, come up with the budget for FY '15. And in our discussions, we basically have come up with the perspective that we don't, at this particular point in time, have enough time to meet the December 1st deadline that the warrant committee puts in place. And so, we're, I think Mr. Walker is going to be asking the warrant committee if we might, as part of our planning, basically get an extension that would go to, where's my document on this? I think the 11th, is that right?
Uh, no.
No, sorry. What did I do with it?
A date in January.
No.
No.
Early, early December. I thought it was December 15th.
Yeah, I thought it was December, but...
December 16th.
16th, okay.
Oh, geez.
That was very good. And the reason being is, we believe that last year, the way the budget was put together from the ground up, and including, you know, all the levels along the way, was a very useful and productive process, and we'd like to utilize that same methodology this year. And as we look at the calendar, we just don't think we can get it together and meet a December deadline. So one of the things we'd like to ask the full school committee is if we can add another meeting to the December schedule, which I think would be December 4th, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
And the purpose of that meeting would be to just discuss the budget in, you know, whatever form it was in at that point, with the goal of having a final vote to send on to the warrant committee on the following meeting, which would be the 11th.
Correct.
So I don't know whether people want to check their schedules. The point being, we'd like to meet during that week. If the 4th doesn't work, we need to, you know, come up with a different date. But that as we're putting this calendar together, that we think we're going to need that additional meeting, and it's better to put it in place now.
So just to clarify, that is not, that is, the focus of that meeting would just be to discuss the budget, but that's not our open budget hearing? That doesn't come until much later?
Yeah, yeah, open budget hearing is usually much later in the year.
Okay. So this is a working meeting for us to discuss where we are with the budget?
Right. The purpose of submitting our budget to the warrant committee for the December 1st deadline, or in this case, an extended deadline, is to give the warrant committee sort of our highest level of budget that we would be submitting. And then, the work that goes on between then and, I think, the end of January, is basically establishing what would a level-dollar budget look like, or if perhaps we could get the warrant committee to tell us what additional resources might be available to us. Before that time, it would be a little bit above level of dollar, but, and that, that's the process that happens after that.
And I see that the full-day budget warrant committee meeting is February 8th this year. So...
Is that even earlier than last year?
It says that. So it used to be the first Saturday in March, correct?
In March, correct.
Now, it looks like it's the first Saturday in February.
Okay.
I think that's, I think that's a guess. I don't think they've said it yet.
Okay. Mrs. Padira?
Sorry. I think I'm fine with a December 4th meeting, but I was just thinking, as another option to coordinate everybody's schedules, because December is a tough month, is I know in the past, we've just, everybody's come to the finance meeting. I don't know what, when you guys meet, but we could put that out there as well. We just had a full school committee meeting at finance to discuss, but I don't know if that meets your needs.
Well, I, you know, I think there's a great benefit to having budget discussions televised. And so, to the extent that we could have it be a nighttime meeting that could be televised, I think that would benefit the process. But that's just my opinion.
Is, are we in agreement that, that we can have a December 4th meeting? Is everyone in favor of that?
Great. Thank you very much. And then, the other thing that is coming up fast and furious, and you may have already received it, is the end-of-year report, which we send to the state, basically details in all the different ways they like to see it, how we spent money last year. And that is typically due on October 1st to the state, and we are hopefully going to meet that deadline this year. So you will be receiving, I think, or have they received?
They haven't received yet.
They haven't received yet. Just what that report is, it's this big, thick document, if you'd like to review it. But we'll be asking for a vote at next school committee meeting from, you folks on that, so that the chair can sign it as part of the approval process. And that's it?
Great. So is that on our?
No.
I'm just checking to see. It's not on our agenda for the next meeting, so we'll add that to the next committee meeting agenda items?
Right. We should also add capital request.
So it's the FY '14 end-of-year, uh, sorry, FY '13 end-of-year?
End of year, yep.
Any other, since we're on that, any other agenda topics for our next meeting?
Yes. Can we get a security update? Just in terms of, I know lots of efforts have gone in.
That's already on the...
It's already on there? Okay. Okay.
That's it. Great. Anything else? We haven't had any citizens speak, so I'm sure there are no responses to that. Is there anyone further to speak? A citizen speak? I don't see anyone. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, not to return, to open session, but to adjourn from executive session for the purpose of negotiation strategy, strategy for collective bargaining with ASME, collective bargaining with the MEA, and deployment of security personnel.
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Walker, seconded by Mrs. Padira. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mrs. Padira? Yes. Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Gable.